The year, today being Tuesday, December 31 of 2024. Welcome, everybody who is attendance. Note that the meeting is being livestreamed and recorded, and we would request if you have a cellphone, if you'd please put it on vibrate or silent. We thank you for that courtesy. We always begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Then we'd ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. Mr. Vanasco, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, everybody. I should have noted that we, of course, keep in our thoughts the family of former President Carter. We yesterday lowered the flags to half-staff. Look it up. The law stipulates that when a president or a former president passes away, the flag must remain at half-staff for 30 days. Keep note of that. Vanessa, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sinatana?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Vogler?
Here. As we do at every meeting, we have two opportunities for public comment, one in just a few moments and then one before we adjourn. We ask if you have comments, if they may be related to county government matters. And you're welcome to speak both times or just once if you wish, or if you're just here to listen. That's equally fine. Next on the agenda, we always set aside time for our roll officers in case they happen to be in attendance, but today none of them are. So that takes us to public comment. I'll open it up to see if anybody at this time in the audience has a comment for us. Hearing none, we'll move along then. In our packet, and by the way, these documents are available for anybody who wishes to see them. Debbie, when we're done, I'll hand my packet over to you. Warrant registers from the Controller's Office, which are dated December 18, 20, and 23. Gentlemen, I'll give you time to look them over. Take whatever time you need, and then whenever you're ready, I could take a motion for us to accept these documents. I hope we accept the warrant records.
I'll second.
Thank you both, gentlemen. Do either of you have any questions? If not, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sinatana?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The minutes of the December 17 meeting are in our packet. We did not meet on December 24. So, gentlemen, I'll give you time to look them over, and whenever you're ready, I could take a motion for us to adopt the minutes, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Gentlemen, thank you both. Do any of you have any concerns regarding the minutes? If not, I'll ask Vanessa to do a roll call.
Commissioner Sinatana?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under written communications, we've received two documents that will enter into the record. The first is from S.A. Recycling, which is based in Orange, California. The letter notes that S.A. Recycling, located at 214 Gardner Avenue in the city of Newcastle, is submitting a renewal permit application to the DEP for their recycling operations. And this document is signed by Joel Fiscasso, who is the East Coast Environmental Manager for S.A. Recycling. The next document comes from Apex. It's a company based in Greensburg. Engineering and environmental services company. They're writing on behalf of their client, Americal Aggregates, which is based in Butler County. And this involves mining that they are currently doing in Wayne Township of Lawrence County. They are submitting documentation to the DEP for a renewal of permits. And the project is north of and adjacent to their current active Welsh quarry. And it does provide a description of the location, which is near State Route 288 and Jockey Moore Road in Wayne Township. And this document is signed by Don Leasock, who is Senior Technician for Apex Companies. Gentlemen, those are the two documents we've received. Would one of you care to make a motion for us to accept them? I'll make that motion to accept the documents.
I'll second.
Thank you both. Do either of you have any questions or concerns about either of these documents? Okay, thank you. We'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinatana?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Next on the agenda would be Commissioner Reports and Comments. And today, Commissioner Sinatana, you're listed first.
Oh, thank you, Chairman. Two weeks since our last meeting. I'm trying to think of the activity over the last two weeks with the holiday season and everything. Probably one highlight I did, I had a chance to go to the soft opening of the barbecue. Lost my barbecue right down the street here a week ago on Saturday. I was impressed with the job that they did there. I think this was the fifth opening of a restaurant in downtown Newcastle this past year. So I think it's going to make a nice addition on this end of town. I know, gentlemen, it's something unique that you've seen with the La Meestry Downtown and the R Spot up above the hill there and with the station and the beer place where my old office used to be. I think you're seeing a lot of things start to happen downtown Newcastle. And it's very unique type of businesses, I think, which would be good for downtown. So I just thought that was probably the highlight there. Last weekend, there hasn't been that many community events just because of the holiday season. I did have a chance to see that. I was impressed with it. I'm wishing them well as they all move forward. It's just that you're starting to see things happen in the community. I'm just happy to see that. That's pretty all my comments for today.
Thank you, Chris, very much. I guess I'm up next. Two things quickly. Later in the meeting, we will be voting to hire an individual to replace Artisha Foster, who is retiring as the Director of our Tax Claim Office. Tish was here at our last meeting, and we wished her well at that time, but we'll do so again. Artisha has been a tremendous employee and a tremendous leader here at the county in her role as the Director of the Assessment Office. I've always been impressed, especially with her attention to detail. She doesn't leave that office until everything balances to the penny. And we greatly appreciate her many years of service to the county. And of course, today is the last day. Judge Motto will be President Judge. He retires effective the end of workday today. He will remain a senior judge. And from what I understand, he will still come to the courthouse on Thursdays for treatment court, which we're pleased that that will continue. I want to thank Debbie Wonther for the wonderful article that she wrote about Judge Motto. Very, very nice article. We're sorry to see the judge go. We're happy for him. We're happy that he's going to remain a senior judge. And we're looking forward to a good, strong working relationship with incoming President Judge J. Craig Cox. We've worked well with Judge Cox through the years, and I expect the transition in the courts is going to be seamless. Judge Cox is a first-class professional and has certainly a good temperament, as does Judge Motto. So we're, again, looking forward to our time ahead with Judge Cox and his role as the President Judge. That's all I have. I'll turn it over to my colleague, Commissioner Kennedy.
One thing, Dan, it's hard to believe it's been a year, but I had that conversation with Judge Motto a year ago. You've got a year to go. I just had the same conversation with Judge Hodge this morning. Said that year is going to go quick. Enjoy it because it will. And they did with Judge Motto. We're going to miss and see him in the morning, but he'll be around. It has been a quick year. A very good year. I just hope I get through tonight and into 2025, and I can forget 2024, as you guys are well aware. But jeez, we look at it. This first year, Chris and I, it's long. As you told us getting into this, there's never a dull moment here, and every day is something different. It sure is. Sure has been. So we thank everybody here at the courthouse for this first year and the next three, and we'll see what happens after that. Thank both. Very grateful for what you're doing, Joe. Of course, we can't live without her over here on the right. She does it for all of us, so we thank them all.
Thank you, Dan. The feeling is mutual. We move on to new business. Our first resolution, and Vanessa, can you tell us the number, please?
385.
385?
Yes.
Thank you. This is Resolution 385, and this is the proposed budget for the upcoming calendar year. Commissioners introduced the budget on December 10 through Resolution 2024-37383. As we noted at the time, law requires that the budget be on display for 21 days, which it has been. And we do have to adopt that today. It's actually the last day for us to adopt it because it'll go into effect tomorrow. We thanked him before, but we need to thank him again, and that's the gentleman sitting to my left, our county administrator, Joe Vanasco, who put many, many hours into this. He worked closely with the department heads and the elected officials. He had good assistance from the Controller's Office as well as our good friend over in the, yes, in NHDs, Albert Antonelli. We thank all those folks. But Joe couldn't happen without you. As we've noted, the budget is balanced and does not include any change to the real estate tax, which, as we've said many times, is the only tax we are permitted to levy. Let me see if my colleagues have any comments before we move forward. Dan, anything you'd like to say?
Nothing, just a big thing is we kept it down. We kept straight the sandwiches. I think one of the goals we had. Thank you, Joe. I've been in your office how many times when we were working on this thing, and a lot of hard work goes into it. We thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Commissioner Sinatana?
I'll echo my colleagues. I think this was the first budget that I've had to deal with as Commissioner. I've dealt with budgets for many, many years in Harrisburg. The whole process began in January. Go through June. This was a little bit of a different process. I do want to commend you, Joe, and your, and Albert, and the Controller, and everyone, like Dan said. I think our focus was, and I know when I got here, I sat with Joe, and we've had many conversations throughout the years in this budget process before. And I think the message was said early on. I think all three of us was fiscal responsibility and not to raise taxes. I think that was so important for all of us. I think throughout the year, we kept a close eye on the spending. I commend the other roll officers for their fiscal restraint. As you said, many stayed the same or just barely went up, and some actually went down. And I commend them for their actions and that, I think, because it's not easy. I had to make this adjustment. I'll talk about that later. Want to hear comments again. But go through this budget process. I think I'm very happy with it. In our focus, we had to get through the ARPA on May 7 when we gave the rest of the money away. And since I said it that day and I say it now, when we have to spend money at the county level, we have to do it responsibly. I always don't like just giving money away. I like to invest. And I think this budget says that. We've made investments throughout the year through economic development. My dance is on that board. We made some good investments there. We made investments with some of our social services and things like that, which we hope to see dividend pay in the future. And I think that's so important as we go on to the next year. I think we want to keep that same focus in mind of fiscal responsibility, making sure. Hopefully, come a year from now, we're going to say the same thing. We don't have to raise taxes. Let's hope a disaster doesn't occur or something that would cause that. Because as Commissioner Vogler would always say, we get revenue one way, that's property tax. We don't have a luxury in income tax. We don't have a luxury in sales tax. And we have to be very positive to that because that affects a lot of seniors. That affects a lot of working people. That affects business and the community. So to be able to get through without an increase, I think that speaks volumes of everyone involved in the process. And hopefully, that process will continue, and that same philosophy will continue as we move forward. So I just wanted to express my thanks to you, Joe, and Albert, and everyone because how many times we sit there and go through those numbers, and I go see you a week later, and while the numbers change a little bit, you look at each agency and their needs and concerns. Things can come up. And what amazes me, because we have to publish information. In order to spend money, it takes two of us to have to sign. And we go through, and we all do this pretty much together. Whenever we're there, we look and see the expenses that go out. I'll be honest, I didn't know the amount of expenses that we have as a kind of, just to pay for things and go through that whole process. So there's a lot of procedures in the system to make sure that the money's spent wisely. The money is, you go to the best vendors to try to save whenever you can save it. So I think from a learning experience, that's what I took out of some of that. That's really all I have to say on the budget and look forward to this thing to happen.
Chris? And Joe, any comments on your part?
Just again, thank you to the Commissioners. It does take a lot of time. It's a process. It started September 1 with the department heads and with really getting after a budget. So it's a long process, and I know it takes a lot of my time. And the Commissioners have always been supportive as it goes towards the budget. And a special thank you to department heads and elected officials. I think I said this a few weeks ago. I believe 16 of our 33 or 34 departments at the initial budget came in under where they were at last year with what they submitted. And that makes that process so much easier when that happens. Obviously, Controller Restipine and the work that he put in, and also Albert Antonelli from NHDs. He's come over and really, he's a wizard with computer and spreadsheets and so forth. So he's a great help in the process as well. I appreciate their time. I know all three of us, Controller Restipine, Albert Antonelli, and myself. There was a lot of times, 6, 7, 8 o'clock at night, we were working on the budget. It's really become a process that's, you know, that's kind of seamless, right? I appreciate everybody's support. Outside of that, from what went on display, just a couple minor adjustments will be filed in the final budget. I had a typo, a line item for JPO vehicles, where I had $400. It was $4,000, so we made the adjustment. Elected officials. When we started the process, we're looking at the quota for elected officials, and it was, I had it at 3.47% at that time. It went to 3.5%. And the adjustments have all been made in the budget from December 11.
Thank you again for everything that you did to pull this together, Joe. We're very grateful. We need to approve Proposed Resolution 385, which will then put the budget in place officially. Would one of you gentlemen care to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second the motion. Thank you both, gentlemen. Are there any other final comments? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinatana?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The budget is now adopted. In conjunction with that, one of the things we have to do on an annual basis is determine the percentage figure for employee contributions towards their health insurance costs. Some of the employees who are members of the various unions adhere to the language in the respective union contracts. The way this resolution is worded, that it states that healthcare contribution costs, which would cover health insurance, will be a maximum of 6% of the premium cost of the policy effective January 1, 2025 for non-union management and county compensated elected officials. Again, noting that the union employees fall under the language in their respective contracts. Joe, anything else on this matter?
No, just, you know, a lot of times the department heads go off of what the union negotiates in their various departments and so forth. But, you know, some are 5%, some are 6%. It's a maximum of 6%. That's the highest. I believe you have to be union and negotiate 6%.
Okay. So some employees will be contributing 5%. And it's not 5% of their income or salary. It is 5% of the cost of the insurance. I can recall when we first implemented this process many years ago, there was some confusion. Some people thought, oh, my goodness, they're taking X% of my income. It's not that. It's the cost of the policy for each employee. Dan, any questions on this proposal? Thank you, Chris. I'm just happy to see that the actual cost was elevated, which is very rare, so we're very pleased to see that. I'll note that when I started here 20 years ago, if I recall correctly, at the time, there was no contribution from employees at that time. So through the years, there has been the implementation of a portion being taken from each employee to go towards the cost of the health insurance. This is Resolution 386. Would someone care to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Dan. We'll take a roll call, please, assuming there are no other questions.
Commissioner Sinatana?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Proposed Resolution 387. We noted earlier in the meeting that Artisha Foster, who's retiring, I believe her last day is Friday of this week? Or Thursday, Monday of next?
It's 3rd.
Oh, that'd be this Friday. Okay. I couldn't remember if it was next Monday or this Friday. So Tish will be wrapping up. We posted the position both internally as well as externally. When I say "we," our HR department did that. They received a number of applications. They worked in conjunction with our county administrator. And I believe they consulted with the solicitor as well.
Very much so. And our solicitor works very closely with the office.
Yep. He has a firsthand knowledge of what they do day in, day out. We did receive a number of applications, again, both external folks as well as some internal folks. How many? I'm not sure. Do you know the total number that came in? Seven. Thank you. And we conducted interviews of three of those. When I say "we," the Commissioners in conjunction with Mr. Vanasco and Attorney Madore. And what we have before us is a resolution that would name Brian Burek to serve as the Tax Claim Director. And he would start his role on Monday, January 6 of 2025. Of course, Mr. Burek is a former county commissioner, having been elected to, I believe, at least two terms back in the 90s. And then he was appointed last year to fill a vacancy. So Mr. Burek does come to the position with firsthand knowledge of that office as well as firsthand knowledge of the overall operations of county government. This resolution, as it's proposed, would name Mr. Burek as the new Tax Claim Director. Let me see if Mr. Sinatana has any comments.
No, I think the process, that was a fair process. I know that our administrator and our solicitor had criteria that had to be met in order for the applicants to move forward. That's how I believe it. That's how we got down to three.
Correct.
Joe, that's perfect. Yeah. Out of the three, you give it in the process. Mr. Burek come out and talked about it. So I just, the process, it's very fair.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Kennedy, any comments?
None.
Okay, thank you, sir. I should note that of the three that were interviewed, two were interviewed in person. The third individual was done by a telephone conference call that was with Mr. Vanasco and Attorney Madore. Is that my recollection? Okay, thank you. Well, we have in front of us Proposed Resolution 387. Would someone care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Sinatana. Is there a second? I will offer the second to the motion. Any final comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinatana?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
None.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is, oh, we have Chad Strobel, our Public Safety Director, with us. And Chad has a couple of proposals for us to consider. Chad, good morning and welcome.
Good morning.
And I hope you're doing well.
Yes, sir.
That's good. Appreciate you taking the time to join us. The first proposed resolution would be 388. And this involves a contract. I'm assuming it's a renewal with a company known as IGS Energy, which provides electricity services specifically to the Public Safety Department building in Hickory Township. And would it also include the various communication towers that have the various little substations in each of them?
That's correct, yes. It'll cover all nine of our sites and our facility.
And I'll let you finish and fill us in on what all was involved here, please.
This will, somebody will lock in our rate for the next 12 months, starting January 1. It was five months ago. Two months ago, we approved to use our consultant, our broker to seek out a good electric rate. And this is what they came back with, which was, I believe, what the Government Center and the Government Center's facility wanted as well. So we'll be with the same lock-in, the same company, different broker, but we got the same company to lock in our electric rate for coming here. So you guys approved IGS. We would have had this a couple weeks ago, but they set up a couple incorrect addresses. And we did everything sort it out. We missed the deadline for last name you guys sent. So we'll just be locking in that rate for the next 12 years. And that's for all of our tower sites.
Chad, you said 12 years?
I'm 12 months. Sorry.
Thank you. That'd be nice. 12 years would be enough, Chad.
That's all right. But yeah, that's our 10 sites. Catalan Road, Spartan Drive, Spartan Park. We have two facilities, two buildings there. Newcastle Road and then Wilmington. That's one of our tower sites. We run space off American Tower there. sites, would run space off of American Tower there. Phila Avenue, we run space off of American Tower. Woodbridge Lane is crowded. McKim Road is crowded. That McKim Road is RV Corps of Engineers would run space off of that. Jockey Moore Road is crowded. Bull End is our tower site. And Blasky is our tower site. Those are by the town.
Forgive my interrupting you, but you mentioned the Jockey Moore Road, which is in Wayne Township, and you heard us talk about the mining activity down there. There's no direct impact on that to your knowledge?
No, that's a couple of miles away down the bottom of the hill. It's pretty far where you can see it. You can see everything from Jockey Moore Road, tower site. You sit up there, listen to, was that Beaver Valley, the racetrack or whatever?
Oh, yeah. Across the river.
Listen to that going. Hear it all, see it all.
And, and Chad, I use the word substation. That's probably not the appropriate word. What, what are the, what utilizes electricity at the sites of the communication towers?
We have every place, we have a shelter, small building that contains all the computer equipment. So the HVAC units and the, that run the shelter, the lighting. And we have inverters to run the batteries. Most of our equipment runs off a twelve volt battery. So it comes in, charged the batteries, comes out of the batteries, run the radios. We also have servers up there. We have microwaves to complete the hop. So from Spartan Park, that hops to, I believe, Mercer Road. That Mercer Road jumps to Jockey Moore Road, Jockey and it creates a mesh network. So if one system goes down, the rest of it picks it up and keeps the radio systems, systems going. So it runs the shelter, the lighting, the HVAC units, the radios, the computers in there, keeps everything going. And our, none of our tower sites. Well, Blasky is around the, at A like on top of Ford Air Craft.
And I have to, I apologize to you a second time now because I kind of jumped in on you while you were describing all this. And so forgive me, I should have waited to ask my questions. That being said, do you have more to add?
Uh, no, that's it. I mean, we're just locking in again, same, same provider that the rest of the county went with. Took a different route, but we got to the same provider, same rates and everything. So that will lock us in for the next twelve months at a rate. And we do, we go through a lot of electric, especially our facility, County Line Road. It would have been an outrageous expense to broadcast like just for our building out there. So all of our heat's electric, everything is electric out there. So finding a good rate's important.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for your diligence on this. And I'm going to ask Mr. Kennedy if he has questions.
No. Thank you, Chad, for getting this done.
Thank you, Dan. Commissioner Sanada? Alrighty. So you're asking us to give our approval to this. Since you are asking that, I'll see if my, by the way, IGS stands for Interstate Gas Supply LLC. But that being said, gentlemen, would one of you care to make a motion for Resolution three eighty-eight?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you both. And if there are no other questions, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is Resolution three eighty-nine, and this would be for us to enter into a contract with BearCom. They're based out of Dallas, Texas. The amount of this service agreement is seventy-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-five. And then if, Chad, if you'd be kind enough to give us a rundown on what services BearCom provides to us?
Yes, this will be a renewed contract, existing contract, we're just renewing for the two thousand and twenty-five calendar year. BearCom, previously Stanley is who utilizes a vendor for many, many years for our radio systems. They're staying with BearCom now. They have a shop in, our shop that we use locally is Borben, Ohio. Also Pittsburgh and West Virginia around this area. We have technicians out of all of them that work with us. This will be a contract to maintain various systems, our paging systems, so we can notify fire departments of incidents, the various radios and systems we use to broadcast the radio transmissions. Thirty-one, I believe, we're, thirty-one cameras at our facility and the hundred and five cameras here at the courthouse covered under this contract. All of the computers and switches that move the data across and the microwave systems, which did that, just that one came, came in yesterday. I got a call about seven o'clock that one of our towers was down. Ended up being just a small mechanical issue with the generator to replace a, any cord or a few in it. But that showed us that there was another problem with one of our other towers, communication wasn't working correctly. So they were out by seven-thirty, ordered the part, hadn't installed by nine o'clock, sent the old part back to get serviced, and it was all taken care of by new. The BearCom was on it. They found it, called me, sort of, without. It was all handled by new. So they'll take care of, like I said, all of our paging, all of our radio systems, all the cameras, both here and at the county line road facility. And be on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, a lower rate than it would be if all of them out, you know, on, without a contract in place. This will be seventy-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars billed monthly at six thousand, fifty-three dollars a month. And I believe the majority of this comes out of our state fund for the number one, so it's a very small impact on the general funds of the county.
Thank you for all of that information. It's very helpful. And Mr. Sanada, do you have questions for Mr. Strobel?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
No, I'm just well aware of BearCom. I know they always did a great job for me, and I'm sure you're a little bit bigger than what Wilmington Township is. They take care of you. Some good people up there.
Did you listen for the township radios?
Oh, okay.
Issue. Okay.
We, we had problems. We couldn't communicate with trucks. I called them. We had to wait some time because of COVID getting parts. But once they got off their mind, I went to the parts.
Oh, that's, we waited over a year to get it. Had to replace one of our sites. It was down for a while. But it's back up now.
They weren't the only ones in that problem.
Well, Chad, appreciate again, you're giving us all of this helpful information. Dan and Chris, this is Proposed Resolution three eighty-nine. Would one of you care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you both, gentlemen. And if there are no other questions, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Chad, I, I do want to thank you. You know, you, you, one of the many things that you do is you're, you're tremendous at keeping us in the loop. Things happen throughout the county. We're very grateful to you for that. We hope two thousand and twenty-five is a safe year for everybody. So also, did anyone mention to you this Thursday at ten o'clock, we're going to be having an executive session of salary board?
Yes.
You're aware of that? Okay. You're, you able to stop by?
Yes.
Okay, good. Gentlemen, anything else for Mr. Strobel?
Thanks for the job you shared.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your continued support. You guys, this first year, appreciate it very much. Look forward to next year.
You bet. Well, Happy New Year to you and your family, Chad.
Happy New Year to myself.
Chad, will you give us the weather forecast? I guess you're late this one now.
It's not looking, our probability of much snow is not very high here, mostly down, you know, somewhere set down in the mountains, that area. Again, our Pittsburgh area covers, you know, parts of Ohio, West Virginia, Pennsylvania, western side of Pennsylvania. So we're getting a lot of alerts because of southern mountains. So down, you know, Seven Springs, that area, West Virginia.
It comes alert, you send them seven, twenty-four seven to us. So I'm sitting in bed and I'm like, look, it's like, it's Chad. I guess, you know, it's what's going on. But I was like, winter alert. I'm looking at this, this.
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're probably going to hit some snow. I'm not seeing it probably go from a little bit of rain over to, you know, a little bit of a mixed stuff over the snow. But we're not right now prepared to get too much. If you like skiing, looks like the miles are going to be good.
So if we get a lot of snow, let me, you're just like the weather guy. After I get my inspiration, we all work together.
Thanks, Chad.
But Happy New Year to you all.
You too, Chad. Take care. This next proposal, which would be Resolution three nine zero. We do this every year, gentlemen. It's, it's a little bit lengthy, but we have to transfer money from each, in each department and row office as it relates to our HRA, which is our health, oh, my goodness, drawn a blank. It's, it's what covers over and above what our health insurance covers.
Health reimbursement.
Health reimbursement, thank you.
You're welcome.
And every year at this time, when we get to the end of the budget year, which in this case would be the two thousand and twenty-four budget year, we do have to make transfers. Suffice it to say, the total amount of this year's transfer is two hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars. And I'll quickly get down the list so we have it as entering into the record, although it does vary from, from office to office. Let me just say that it's coming from HRA. There are a couple of exceptions, and I'll quote them. But they're coming from HRA in the following amounts: four hundred dollars into the register and recorder benefit line item, eleven thousand, one hundred dollars into the voters' office benefit line item, eighteen thousand, eight hundred dollars into the controllers' benefit line item, twenty-five hundred dollars into the solicitor benefit line item, fifty-five hundred dollars into the tax claim benefit line item. Now, for the treasurer's office, a hundred and fifteen thousand from the treasurer's FICA line item. Then getting back to HRA, sixty-one hundred dollars into the treasurer benefit line item, seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars into the court benefit line item, eighteen hundred dollars into District Judge Cartwright's benefit line item, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars into the public defender benefit line item, twenty-two hundred dollars into the coroner benefit line item, fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty into the district attorney benefit line item. And then from the treasurer's FICA line item, nineteen hundred dollars into EMA, Emergency Management Office benefit. Getting back to HRA, thirty-nine hundred dollars into the jail benefit line item. And then finally, eight thousand, four hundred dollars into NHBS benefit line item. So the total amount of this transfer, which is, we noted, we do this every year, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars. Joe, anything to add?
No.
Okay. Chris, any questions?
No.
Uh, Dan?
None.
Okay, thank you. Would one of you care to make a motion for Resolution three ninety?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
I thank you both. And if, if there are no other questions, Vanessa, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have a few transfers to consider this morning. I'll add them into the record. Gentlemen, stop me as I go through here. If you have any questions, just interrupt me. And then when we get to the end, we can either vote on them individually, or we can take them as a group. The planning office is requesting a one hundred and fifty dollar transfer from grants and programs line item into their access line item. The assessment office is asking for a one thousand dollar transfer from their contingency into travel and training. The maintenance department is asking for a two hundred and forty dollar transfer from their employee insurance and benefit line item into that of internet. District Judge Omoti's office is asking for a one thousand dollar transfer from their postage line item into their staples line item. The proponentary's office is asking for a five hundred dollar transfer from their travel line item into their telephone line item. Under the commissioners, we're asking for a three hundred dollar transfer from the temporary part-time staff line item into contracted services. Public defender is requesting a transfer of four hundred and forty-four dollars and fifteen cents from their contingency into their staples line item. The district attorney's office is requesting a hundred and fifty dollars coming from their maintenance and repair line item into their postage line item. And then the proponentary would like to request three hundred dollars from their materials and supplies into their postage. And then finally, maintenance would like to request forty-three hundred dollars coming from their materials and supplies into their maintenance and repairs. Also, five hundred dollars from their gas line item into their telephone and internet line item. Mr. Kennedy, do you have any concerns? Okay, thank you. Mr. Sanada?
No.
Gentlemen, that being said, would, would one of you wish then to make a motion to approve all the transfers that are listed?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I thank you both. And if there are no, are no other concerns, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa.
You're welcome.
Some announcements. The commissioners will convene again a week from today for our weekly public meeting. That would be January seventh of two thousand and twenty-five at ten o'clock in this room, open to the public. State law requires that all counties conduct an annual salary board meeting on the first Monday of the new year, which in this case is Monday, January sixth. The salary board will meet here at ten AM, and that's open to the public. The Lawrence County Opioid Advisory Board meeting, which is open to the public, will take place on Tuesday, January seventh, at twelve noon in this office. It's not listed on the agenda, but we've been notified that there will not be a planning commission meeting in the month of January. It was going to be taking place at the El Port Borough Building, but that meeting's been canceled. And then finally, tomorrow, which is New Year's Day, it's a federal holiday, the courthouse will be closed in observance of the New Year's holiday. All being taken care of, I will open the floor. We have one member of the public with us, and that's Debbie Walker. Debbie, any questions or concerns?
What's Brian Burek's salary going to be? And will he be getting benefits?
The, the, starting salary, what's his?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-one. And I'm trying to recall, I thought he said that he is under his wife's benefits.
Correct.
So I don't believe he will be asking.
Locked out.
I believe he'll lock down.
Well, the controller's office figures as a base salary for that dog's forty-one thousand thing now.
The expectation is that that salary board on Monday, that will be addressed.
So it'll be changed to sixty-five if it passes?
If it passes. Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Yes. I neglected to mention that Mr. Burek is a resident of the city of Newcastle. We usually put where they're from. And Mr. Burek does design.
What's his experience in tax claim?
Well, for all the years he was a commissioner, the tax claim director reported to him and the other commissioners. So he had a working knowledge of that office as a county commissioner. Any other questions, Debbie?
No.
Thank you. Closing comments from my fellow commissioners. Mr. Sanada?
Well, as we close out here, that's earlier comments. I'd just like to address what we have this year. Sorry, we've gone through the whole year. As of Thursday, we need one year's of spending. First, I'd like to thank you, Chairman Vogler, for your advice and efforts this year as the chairman of this board. Because it's an interesting, I had to transition. I transitioned, I transitioned from the legislative branch to the semi-executive branch. That's the way I look at this. We vote, but we're pretty much the executive branch. And sometimes that could be a little more difficult. But I think you helped make the transition easy for me. And I said this before, I've known you forty-plus years. I didn't know Commissioner Kennedy, and it represent Wilmington Township. And I met him last year. And I just want to thank you, Mr. Kennedy, as well. I think that we've shown that we can work professionally together. I think we've accomplished a lot this year as far as activities in the community. We're seeing economic development occur throughout the community. It's a slow process. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for your efforts on the board. There is important, you know, I saw on the tourist promotion agency, we're seeing some positive things happen in that area. And we look at, you know, what's happening with the southwest region. And I got the opportunity, thank you, Chairman, you stepped down in July. I've been working, plus with Joe Foyes and the group up there. So I'm saying we're seeing things happen. It's a slow process. It's something that's not going to happen overnight. But we are definitely heading in the right direction. I think we're seeing things throughout the county in positive, whether it's Elwood City, Shenango, city of Newcastle, Channing, everywhere, I mean, every municipality, you're seeing positive things starting to happen. And I, and especially in the city of Newcastle. I said, I mentioned earlier the five restaurants this past year. I think that's so important. I mean, it is the city, it is the county seat. It's important that the city come back. I think you got a nice crew there in the city that are enthused, that want to try to do some things. And, you know, we're here to help any municipality, you know, throughout the county. And I think we've shown
I think we've shown that, and we do it in the right way, and I think, you know, I think we understand, you know, we're fiscally restrained in what we can do sometimes. But I think we've shown support to most any municipality that's come here, asking for letters of support, things like that. I think that's very important. So I just want to, like I said, thank both of you, because it's been our opportunity to serve the people. And I think that's important, like I said, I've always enjoyed doing it. I'm in my 39th year, if you want to count my 10 years as a congressional aide. I've done my public service, and I've seen a lot of changes over the years. And I've seen, you know, negatives and positives occur, but I think, you know, we're starting to see positive things again. I think it takes everybody, no matter, you know, which, where you're coming from. So I'd just like to just end this year, wish everyone a Happy New Year, and look forward to 2025. And I think if we can continue on the path that we've done, I think you're going to see a lot of positive things happen. That's what I have to say. Dan? Thank you, sir, very much. Mr. Kennedy, any closing remarks?
Yeah, Chris, same to you. It's been an enjoyable year, you know, I didn't know what to expect when I got in here. I tell you, it's been a challenge. Challenge is one, one big thing with the Lawrence County Economic Board. Where we've seen, people don't realize how much changes have taken effect. We saw the O'Velli and Steel is going to get reused, but United Refract was coming in there. The other day, they just got the Steel Light deal all done in Channing Township along with Ben at Lawrence County Economic. We've got that all going too. Hopefully, we see bulldozers out there pretty soon, and a big building going up. With John LaCarte, you know, meeting John and getting to know John down at the St. Crest Park. There's some big activity going on down there right now. If it comes through, it would be a nice boost for Lawrence County. It's a lot of little things, the Honeyberg Plant in the Channing Township moved out to the old drug pharmaceutical in Shenango Township. The Elwood Group ended up buying that building and going to make their own D facility out there. So it's not going to be an empty building. Channing's happy, Shenango's happy, things going out there. You didn't get to make it out, because we were in a meeting, but I ran out to lunch, I'll call it lunch, for the Plaza still, but then guys would yell at me. But Tim Kelly, what he's done with his pickleball out there, and I ran into him on Monday night, and things are going well. And he's getting activity out there. That's, that's been a nice development out there. A year ago, when we took office, that place was dead, and up with Mike Wish and Super Boggers, Shenango Township have done with that, and it's filling in, so. Probably the most exciting thing for me this year is Jersey Mike's is going in, New York Township, so. I love their songs, but I'm not supposed to eat them anymore after what I went through in 2024. But I can steal one once in a while. Yeah, it's, it's been a great year. You two have seen me change quite a bit with what I had to go through. But as Dan tells me, I don't know how to stay home and behave myself. I, I did push back and got myself back, it was fantastic. But I knew I needed to go home, this one would tell me, that's us. Hey, you need to go home and take a break, but I thank you for what you guys. I wouldn't be here today without you guys getting me through this thing, and my family getting me through what I had to go through. We got to do it today, I can say I feel 99.9% better. I'm doing really good, I'm getting my energy back. I was up last night until after 10 o'clock, so that's saying a lot for me, I'm using that bed by nothing. But I was up at 5:20 again. I'm just thankful that I got through what I got through, and you two kept this place going when I wasn't here. Glad, when I come back, I was glad to be here, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dan. We're just very grateful that, from the health standpoint, things have worked out well for you. There were a lot of prayers said for you. Hopefully, those prayers worked. No, I have to say, Chris's comment, this first year has gone fast, very fast. And in my time here, I've had the pleasure of working with some very good Commissioners. Would you gentlemen fall into that category? What I really appreciate, and I think the previous work that you both did before coming here has been so helpful. Your work in the public sector, in the legislature, and your work in both the public and private sectors. Yeah, you have a little bit of a learning curve, but not as big a learning curve as most people have. And the thing I really respected about both of these gentlemen is they work hard, and they care about this county, and they're very conscientious. And we're blessed, we're very blessed to, voters, the voters make some good choices. We're blessed in that respect. So I'm looking forward to another good year.
Yes.
And particularly good health for you in 2025, I'm sure we all want that.
I'll stay away from Joe.
And don't do it, Jersey Mike's too much.
No.
What's in them? And we won't, we won't squeal on you when you do that, we'll keep it a secret. Well, Joe, Joe or Vanessa, anything that we've overlooked, or any comments you wish to make?
Sure.
Vanessa, anything? Debbie, before we wrap up, we, we thank you, you know, week after week, you report to the folks in the county what we're doing up here. And we appreciate your fairness, and we look forward to another good year of working with you, so.
Thanks.
Well, wish everyone a Happy New Year. May I have an adjournment motion?
I'll, I'll second.
Go ahead.
Been moved by Mr. Sanada and seconded by Mr. Kennedy that we adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carries, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Joe, you'll turn off the.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.